Call to order the April 3rd, 2020 Board of Commissioners meeting. Please silence your cell phones and pledge allegiance led by Commissioner Lloyd LaCroy.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First we'll have items from Emergency Management, please.
Good afternoon, Commissioner. Dustin Willett, Director of Emergency Management for Applesville in Pennington County. Before I just launch into ad hoc, is there anything specifically that you're looking for that I can potentially answer? And in addition to that, as we move forward with these special meetings, if you can provide me with some direction on specifically what you're looking for in terms of an update, be happy to effort that for you. But is there anything specifically that I can address before you this afternoon?
So Dustin, you've had probably some changes over the next, the last couple of weeks. Maybe just update some of the changes, some of the meetings you've had
Sure.
with other entities in the counties and the cities that might be pertinent for us to know here at the county as well.
Absolutely. So our biggest thing is that we have, and again, the levels don't mean much, but we have increased our operations in the EOC. And I think we've talked about this before, but I've got about six people that are physically in the EOC every day, 8:30 in the morning till 4:00 in the afternoon, and then about five more that are working virtually on different projects. So they email, they call in, we use them as necessary. And then some liaisons in the community, again, that are working for different things. So a pretty big structure that's going on every day in the Emergency Operations Center. There is a daily brief and then a weekly senior leadership brief that's going out. Right now, that's going to Commissioner Drews and Commissioner Hadcock, and we just need to work on where else that goes. We'll certainly add people to that as necessary. But we can talk about that offline on terms of who needs to be on that distribution list. Some of the big things that we're working on, obviously, is just situational awareness for, again, what we call the community lifeline. So FEMA has a structure called community lifelines that are safety and security, food, water, and shelter, health and medical, energy, communications, transportation, and then we use financial services as well. So those are all our big buckets. An example of some of the work that we've done, or just again, a snapshot of some of the things that are happening, is we've been on the phone with at least 22 grocery stores, just asking about supply chain and shopping patterns and various different aspects of the grocery supply operation. Same with convenience stores, same with pharmacies, same with long-term care facilities and adult daycares, and all of those groups in the community we're actually on the phone with, asking how they're doing, asking how their PPE supplies are, are they having any workforce issues? Just trying to get some situational awareness then again of how these operations and how these different components in our community are doing with the various impacts of COVID-19. So that's daily work that happens. We do that both through phone calls and then through RFIs or requests for information, basically documents that get sent out and then returned to us. The other-
So Dustin, are any of those having supply issues or basically employee, meaning issues like leaving or anything like that in general?
If I were to classify it, I would say minor. The details again or then are in the report, but there certainly are. Obviously, we know that the shelves are bare sometimes and certain commodities are hard to get. Other than some medical, personal protective equipment or PPE, the commodities in the community, the supply chain has an interruption to it, but it's not complete. It's not like no toilet paper is coming into Rapid City or Pennington County. That supply chain is still intact. It's just not necessarily meeting 100% of our demand, but the commodities are still coming in. So I would say there's a minor impact, but it's not creating, it's not creating significant issues in our community yet.
Have you seen any basically states that have a pattern of the same issues with different supplies besides medical?
So yeah, there's certainly similar patterns. We have to be careful about how much we look outside of South Dakota because we're not comparing apples to apples. Our supply chain is different. We're different on the, no pun intended, food chain. But they're not direct comparisons, but we look at communities and states that are somewhat similar. And yeah, so we are, but we look more to what's happening in South Dakota and then immediately around us in our region to try to get a handle on what's coming, to forecast out. The one other big project that I think is probably worth sharing, of note, is we're working right now on, so we really try to step in and help where there's a hole. We don't want to duplicate efforts, but we want to look across the community and see what's not being addressed and make sure that we provide for that. So one of the things that we're working on right now with multiple partners is how do we provide for the medical needs of recovering COVID-19 patients in the homeless population? So we have certain things in the community, certain organizations, One Heart Hope Center, Cornerstone Rescue Mission, the Care Center, lots of organizations that are designed to assist that community. The problem is they're not designed necessarily to assist the sick in that community as this virus moves through that community. And so we're looking at what option do we have for someone that says, so let's say they're taken to Monument Health, diagnosed with COVID-19, but they're not sick enough to take up a hospital bed, but where you or I might be sent home to isolate and recover if they're homeless. Once they're discharged from the hospital, there's no place for that individual to go recover. So that's one of the big pieces we're working on right now and frantically working on is answering that question. Where does that person go to recover? And so that's an example of some of the work that we're doing in the EOC.
Thank you. Questions, Commissioner?
Thank you, Dustin.
Thank you, Dustin.
Thank you, Dustin.
John, number eight, do you have any updates on the Family First Coronavirus? He's just gonna, is this gonna take you very long on this, or do you have any updates? Then we'll have you, Gary.
Okay. So eight and nine, actually, oops, go together, so no updates. The Family's First Coronavirus Response Act data is the same that we had last week. No changes to that at all.
And we'll wait on-
We're still compiling everything else as far as names and essential functions.
Thank you, sir.
So I hope to have that for you on Monday.
Okay. And number nine, we'll have Gary go first, and that's a letter from the counties, then we'll have you come back up, John. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Today, we were asked by the South Dakota Association of County Officials, to, County Commissioners, to be in support of a letter asking the Governor to detail some authority back to municipalities and counties relative to the virus issue. And here to kind of explain that I've been working through this today are both Jay Alderman from our state's Attorney's Office, and I think Rich Williams is here from Gunnerson Palmer. And I would ask them to come forward and give an explanation of just what we're dealing with here, Jay.
Thank you, Commissioner Drews. Jay Alderman with State's Attorney's Office. First, if I might, I'd just like to thank, you know, a week ago, we were here hoping for some things to happen in Pierre earlier in this week. And I just want to thank a number of individuals, and you remember Helene Duhamel was here and was very instrumental in taking our message and some draft language and so forth to Pierre. And I know there were a number of other members of our legislature that were helpful in trying to get some things passed, but as you know, in the end of the day, it didn't work out. So what I'm here today, we've received through our State Association of County Commissioners, a draft letter, I think a draft executive order, and a declaration of public health emergency for the Secretary of Health to sign. And as Commissioner Drews said, Mr. Williams is here today, and I'll introduce him in a moment. But just very briefly and quickly, what this letter is hoping to do is to implore the Governor to involve the Secretary of Health to declare a public health emergency and to evoke some of the powers that the Governor and the Secretary of Health have in statute to take some actions, including delegating or authorizing local jurisdictions, cities, counties, to take some specific action by ordinance and resolution. We believe that authority is there to do that. We are simply asking that they do that. It didn't work out Monday and Tuesday in Pierre. This is another way to ask for assistance at the state level. And so they're asking for the Commission to sign on, be a signatory to this letter, saying that you're asking and supporting the request to the Governor's Office and the Secretary of Health's Office. Rich Williams is here today. He's been retained by the South Dakota Public Assurance Alliance, which I know you're all very familiar with, and support the county in many ways. And he has a little bit more background on the letter and attachments and so forth than I do. And I thought it might be a good idea if he was here, if you had any specific questions about the purpose of the letter and what we're seeking beyond maybe what I just said here. So I guess at this point, I'd ask Rich to come forward and maybe ask any, or answer any questions you might have.
While he's coming forward, I might just mention that South Dakota Public Assurance Alliance, for those that don't know, is our liability carrier. That's who we purchase, our county purchases their liability through.
Thank you. I think Mr. Alderman said it very well.
Is that your name, sir?
Oh, I'm sorry. Richard Williams. I'm from Gunnerson Palmer Law Firm.
Thank you, sir.
I think Mr. Alderman said it very well, what the purpose of the letter is for. Basically, it's just requesting that the Governor, in consultation with the Secretary of Health, provide, you know, additional support to the counties and municipalities by working in connection or in cooperation with those political subdivisions in order to help those subdivisions utilize some of the additional authority that you'll find in Chapter 3422 that is possessed by the Department of Health.
So can I ask you a question, Mr. Williams? So she's been reluctant to do this so far. I mean, what's the bottom line? And there's got to be an underlying reason why she's not doing that already. And now we have to ask her personally as counties, let alone, I know, the city, at least one city has asked her to move this forward. Do you see that this is going to make a difference at this point because it has counties actually signed by, excuse me, a lawyer, saying, you know, we need some help?
Madam Chair, I hope that that is the, I hope that's the effect, that there's, that shows some support, statewide support for this. And it also does add a piece that I don't know that was considered before, and that is in the fourth paragraph of that letter.
Yes, sir.
Dealing with the declaration of public health emergency in order to help the state potentially receive additional federal funding. I don't know whether the Governor has considered that or not. I'm sure they have. They've got quite intelligent people there within our office. It's just something that we wanted to point out in addition to the items that we pointed out previously.
So you haven't had, has any other state had that reluctance to move that forward, given people the authority? Or have you seen any other state have that, given their cities and their counties authorities based on, like Arizona, Western? Arizona isn't bad, but the eastern part is really bad. So I mean, that makes a common sense kind of thing to do, I understand, but-
We did not do a 50-state review, but just by happenstance, I happened to run across something Montana did with regard to their voting and vote centers. And they did, in fact, utilize the same sort of statutory analysis or workings that we're proposing here in order to allow their locals to deal with the election-type issues.
Thank you. Questions, Board? Thank you, Rich.
Thank you, Rich.
Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Thank you, Jay.
Thank you, Jay.
So Madam Chair, I would make a motion authorizing the Chair to sign on to this letter to be forwarded to the Secretary of Health and to the Governor.
It's been a motion by Gary.
Second.
Sorry, by Drews. Second by LaCroy.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner DeSanto.
I think it is important for Gary to read this letter.
That'd be good.
The letter itself? I think the letter, now just, Rich, I'm not asking you to come up. Rich, this letter was actually drafted from the municipality standpoint, was it not?
I believe it was drafted between the municipalities and as a joint effort with-
With the county? Okay, okay. So the letter, Dear Governor Noem, thank you for your efforts to lead the state of South Dakota in its response to the COVID-19 pandemic. This is a difficult time for our leaders and all South Dakotans as they try to make best decisions possible in the interest of the public health. We know you and your team are working diligently to keep us safe. The authority currently available to municipalities, which dates back to 1939, is untested in this type of crisis. What little authority counties possess, which is also untested in these circumstances, is cumbersome at best. In these difficult times, local governments need to know with certainty that they are able to adequately address the COVID-19 emergency and that all levels of government are working cooperatively. To accomplish this, it is imperative for you to encourage the Secretary of Health to declare a public health emergency in South Dakota with your consent and exercise your authority under South Dakota codified law 34-22-43. COVID-19 certainly meets the definition under SDL 34-22-41 as an imminent threat of illness, health condition, or widespread exposure to an infectious or toxic agent that poses a significant risk of substantial harm to the affected population. Numerous states in the nation have also taken the additional step of declaring a public health emergency. The attached draft declaration and consecutive executive order would allow our local governments to carry out the provisions of Executive Order 2020-08. Furthermore, a declaration of a public health emergency at the state or local level may be necessary for South Dakota to receive federal funding. The Families First Coronavirus Response Act that became effective April 1 provides funds to states for the public health emergency created by COVID-19. This act requires a state to issue an emergency declaration to access, to access funds for South Dakota households under its SNAP provision for emergency allotments to address temporary food needs. In addition, the recently enacted Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Act creates a coronavirus relief fund that will grant South Dakota $1,250 million to use toward expenditures incurred due to the public health emergency. That's a billion, $250 million. A declaration of the public health emergency would give South Dakota access to these and potentially others, other much-needed funds. Cases of COVID-19 have been confirmed in nearly half of South Dakota's counties, and community spread numbers are rising every day. In a situation like this, time is of the essence, and swift action on this declaration is necessary to prepare and limit impact as much as possible. Thank you, Governor Noem, for your consideration in this matter.
Sorry, drying out. Thank you. Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next, we'll have item B. John, please.
Good afternoon again, Commissioners. John Moore, Pennington County, Human Resources. So this is just a review and recommendation again of memos that were presented at a prior meeting, I believe it was the March 27th meeting, and then also discussed at department head meetings. But there's two different memos, both with the same dates for the March 27th meeting. The first-
Just the hire freeze, one first on B. Let's discuss that, and then we'll go to the travel one.
No, that sounds great.
Yes, sir.
So the memo had to do with restricting any additional hiring into positions within the county during the foreseeable future. And the way it actually was drafted was this, I move to halt the hiring of any newer replacement employees into county positions without Board of Commissioners' approval until further notice.
Your motion?
So moved.
Moved by DeSanto, second by Drews. Discussion? Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
So the other two items that we had on the memos had to do with travel. The first motion, recommended motion, is this, I move to restrict all business-related travel with the exception of required law enforcement or court-related activities until further notice.
Move for approval.
Moved by LaCroy?
Second.
Second by DeSanto. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
And the third piece, if you recall, has to do with personal travel by employees during the COVID-19 period. And it was described this way, so it would follow this structure. Again, the recommendation would be travel provisions that you move to apply to county positions. Employee would make the department head or elected official aware of their intent to travel, including general purpose of the travel. The department head and/or elected official makes the employee aware of potential health risks in those areas and outlines the return-to-work process. The employee then would travel, return from travel, notify their department head or elected official of any details regarding the trip that would be related to COVID-19 exposure. The employee returns to work as scheduled in cases where no symptoms or exposure occurred. Or number five, the employee has to stay away from the workplace for up to 14 days in cases of symptoms and/or potential exposure during the time they were away. So the suggested motion would be this, I move to implement the personal travel provisions outlined in this memo, effective immediately, and continuing until further notice through the COVID-19 outbreak or until December 31st, whichever comes first.
So moved.
Moved by DeSanto, second by Roskine. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Those are the only items I had, Commissioners. Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Holly, did we miss anything? Dustin, I do have a question for you too, Dustin. I've forgotten.
Again, Dustin Willett, Emergency Management. Sorry.
So on reimbursement for department heads, are we getting, are you looking at grants? Are you looking at like different acts that they're doing for particular department heads? Or do they have to figure that out themselves? How do we know? We have to document everything, which we know, and we've told the department heads to document anything and everything that can be used for COVID-19. So, and then we just put it in the categories later, or don't we want to get ahead of the game? Meaning, we want to be first on the list, or however you get it ready for what's, those reimbursements are going to be?
So we're not working on that 24/7/365. We're certainly aware of it and doing as much research as we can. The bottom line right now is everyone we've reached out to, all the inquiries we've made, is except, pardon me, except for a few exceptions. We all know money is being allocated, and we all know there's a whole lot of government, federal government programs and offices that have the money, but how states and/or local agencies are going to be able to access that money? There just isn't the detail yet. The bottom line is, we don't know. We all, I really hate the imagery that this engenders. We all know we want to be at the trough. We don't know what that looks like yet. We're not ignoring it. And we do have people looking at that regularly, but there's just, we've exhausted our immediately available resources, and the answer we get back is, we just don't know yet how that process is going to work. In terms of other departments, that's another hard thing, is when it comes to some of the FEMA funding and disaster funding, we have some subject matter experts, you know, that we can rely on to try to sort some of that out. When it comes to HUD funding and justice funding, and, you know, I would say that organizations, different departments in the county that already have working relationships with those federal agencies, they're probably going to be much more successful and have a much more rapid turnaround of that information if they work with those agencies that they're already comfortable working with and have a relationship with, rather than me trying to wade into totally unfamiliar waters to try to find those answers for them. Doesn't mean we're not, and that doesn't mean when we come across great information that we're not going to share that out. That's part of that financial service piece. So like Elevate Rapid City is working really, really hard on how does the business community access some of those government funds that are coming along? Again, there's different people with different parts of this. As we get that information, we will certainly compile everything we can and send it out. But a long way to say, right now, I don't think anybody really has a solid picture on what that looks like.
The main thing is maybe some of the departments that can do some of those things for reimbursements might not have ever filled out grant applications or anything like that. So they're going to need someone with a little bit more, or a lot more, expertise on those areas. So that's kind of what I'm asking too, if they see areas that they might be able to get reimbursed. They're also going to need help on how those grants work, because there's always certain criteria, what do you need to put in order to get those grants is a good way to put it.
Yep. And we don't even know what those applications are yet, but yes.
But you know what I'm saying. Not that you have to do it like today, but just something food for thought that some of the departments might need help on some of those areas that they can get reimbursed for.
We're tracking that. And then Commissioner Drews had a great connect the dots and approach to that and in terms of, one of those organizations that looks at that is our planning districts across South Dakota. So again, the Black Hills Council of Local Governments might be one of those organizations that can help us, all of us, all of our departments through that process. So we'll make sure we maintain a close communication with that group as well. So absolutely.
Madam Chair. Well, I just want to make the comment that I think, you know, the reports that are coming down now from the state that they've added the number of recovered from the virus, which is positive. I'm seeing a lot of people in the community actually seeing that and saying, we've got so many that are recovered now. And actually, tests pending. You know, there for quite a while, we were seeing the 169 pending. Now we're getting down to they're doing it zero. And people in the community are watching that. And I'm glad that's getting more improved and we're getting more straightforward on that. And I can tell the positive results in the community, because it's one of the first things they talk about now is, oh, now we got recovered X amount, but we got X amount positive, you know? So they're seeing that and they're appreciating that.
So the reason I threw my hand up really quick, and it pertains to the motions that you just passed. So in the Emergency Operations Center, in disasters past and currently, the way we spin up, the way we do the work that we do is by bringing on the right people to have worked that center. So I've brought two people in to the EOC, and this first week to make sure personalities match, make sure work is getting done, that that's the right fit. This first week has been in a volunteer status, and the way I move forward with that, at least in disasters past, has been to bring them on as unbenefited temporary employees. So you just passed a hiring freeze, but I'm trying to get literally two people on paid status by Monday who are already working in my EOC and key to the EOC. And if that, if I'm unable to do that, I lose a third of my currently trained staff working in the EOC. So that's a pretty significant impact and would really disrupt our operations. So I guess I don't know how I move forward in bringing on those temporary employees that I was planning on doing on Monday.
So, bottom line is, we're going to be tight on budgets moving forward. So we're probably going to be asking the department heads some different areas that we need help on. So at this point, I don't know what the board's thinking, but-
There's nobody in the county that is a Type 2 Logistics Section Chief that can do the work that I'm having done.
Right.
Madam Chair, I would entertain the thought that this is a, these are positions that would no doubt be reimbursed positions, correct?
I need to be careful on how I answer that, because to maintain the ability to do that, that cannot be a factor in- that cannot be a factor in our decision to bring them on.
Let me ask a question. John, is, are they essential employees? I guess that's where, if you have essential employees, there might be a different, you know, like any other, if nine-one-one loses somebody or is going to, that's essential. So the hiring freeze i- is a hiring freeze basically if you're not essential to that operation. And that doesn't mean you get a guess that, that's based on the Department of Labor. Guys, if you lose somebody that is actually essential to running your operations, that's my point of view. That's a whole different ballgame than a hiring freeze just because we need three more of something or two more or one more. So essential is the key and it's got to be based on Department of Labor's. Not because each department thinks everybody in their department, which we do know is essential, but it has to be based on Department of Labor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, again, John Morrell, Pennington County, Human Resources. So the, the way the Department of Labor actually has provided their guidance, it has to do with any first responders. And this would fall under that group as far as essential replacement employees. So again, I, I would still suggest that you have employees or the departments and elected officials bring forth to you their suggestions or their needs with regard to backfilling. And that way you understand as well which positions are being filled. In this case, I definitely support what, what Dustin is actually asking for. They're really essential in helping him man that operations center and to make sure we have the best response possible to this, this current pandemic.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
I agree, John. And I, I think, you know, this isn't going to be permanent, but, you know, it has to do with this virus, an emergency that we're in and bringing in that help and, and working with them. So I think it, it's not like he's going to add it on and we're going to expect it for the next, permanently. It's, it's for an emergency situation.
In the past, and I will work with John if I'm allowed to move forward with this by the commission, of course. But the way we've done it in that past is, is very delineated. And what I've already put forth for those individuals, and I, I will say that I'm using a, a planning department employee that has emergency management background. I'm using a city, uh, two city employees that have emergency managers. So I'm, I'm taking from, from the city and the county of already paid people that, so it's not that I'm totally hiring on a new force. I, I'm getting the right people to do this work. But anyway, it, it is, right now, it is defined through the end of June. So April, May, June, at the end of June is, is the, so I'm, I'm looking for three months of two people at a great ten-step one, basically fifteen dollars an hour. Again, to your point, I, I don't want to, I don't want to poison the pot by, by mentioning anything specific.
Gotcha.
But it is actually, even if, yes, budgets are going to be tight, the, the amount of money that a non-benefited employee, two employees for three months comes out to is something that is very absorbable by my budget right now, so.
Bottom line is, is for some areas, maybe you have some operations where you could cut some at least to help offset your budget as well. That areas that might, for the next three months, not be essential. Is that a good way to put it? So that's going to be helpful or hours for people that aren't, I don't know how you say that. I'm not going to either, so.
Potentially.
You see what I'm saying?
Potentially.
We're just looking for some help, Dustin.
Yep.
On our budgets. Okay. Yes, sir.
I too would agree with allowing him to move forward with this just because of the fact that these are people that are, that were actually hired as a result of COVID-19. They, they would not have even been entertained as being hired unless we were having to deal with this particular emergency, so.
Right. And they're, and I'll ask the question. So we said if we hired people in areas, maybe we'd try, and you, I think, it sounds like you did that, Dustin, in areas that we already have employees that we could move over there where they're getting, instead of doing part-time, that we could move them over there when Dustin needed them. Is that an option at this time, meaning for us?
So Madam Chair, they've already been doing that. So as he mentioned, he's using some city employees as well as an employee from second floor from the planning department. So that we've asked the other departments if they've got people that are available to help. And he's done an amazing job bringing those folks in and helping them man the operations center for this past week or so. In this case, these are two people that are bringing, brought on, again, in a full-time capacity and a temporary basis to help us with additional functions within that office.
Okay, so you, you're having the planning person from the county and someone from the city, then two others that are going to be part-time? Or those are the part-time? Yes, I misunderstood.
So, so temporary. They're full-time, they're temporary, it's three months, two people for three months.
Okay, so tell me how many people that is? That's two from, maybe I misunderstood.
Because I understand it. We already have three that were working or possibly four, not counting the two that we're talking about now.
So there is a, a myself, Alexa, a planning department employee, two city employees, and these two very specialized current volunteers for the week, just to make sure that, that it was going to work out and that they were available. So it's two additional temporary, full-time, unbenefited employees.
So basically, two temporary in the planning departments, having the cost of the planning person and the two city people, and they're paying for the city.
Yes.
Just because we do
Yes.
work together, okay.
Some shifting and sharing.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
In light of the information provided, I'd probably make the motion to, to move to approve the two temporary, full-time employees for probably, it would be safe to say up to ninety days.
June twenty-second. Right? June twenty-second? So I, my, my current, and I'll, whatever you're willing to do, my, my current anticipation is through the end of June and by the end of June, we will know. And the other thing is it's not guaranteed through the end of June. It's just up to the end of June, if we need to, if we can roll back earlier than that.
Up to the end of June.
Madam Chair, second to that motion.
Okay, there's been a motion by LaCroy, second by Ross Connect. For me, I'm going to say no for now, Dustin, not because you don't need those employees. It's because I'd like to see on your budget if there's any operation or anything else instead of adding to your budget, that there's someplace that you can do some cutting in order to do the two temporary for three months. And not that this isn't essential, but I think in a lot of areas, just depending on your operations or something else that, like you said, for two temporary, that might make a difference for cutting some of your budget in order to take two temporary. Because I know we need flagmen, we need other people that they really need. So.
So if I can address that?
Yes, sir.
Ye- yes, I, I, I'm not asking for any additional money.
Right.
I'll make this happen within my budget currently. And then we'll see how things pan out at the, at the end of all this. But I am certainly not asking for any additional funds. This will be funded completely out of my existing budgeted dollars.
Okay. Been a motion in a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Your name, sir?
Good afternoon, Brian Mueller, Pennington County Sheriff's Office. I just have a, a couple of questions in reference to the staffing hiring freeze. We do have three positions that were, are currently in the mix right now with job offers to start on April twentieth. Two of those are detox techs positions. We're currently down two detox techs, tech positions that we do believe are essential personnel to run that operation. And that is one place that our numbers are continuing to stay very high and very steady work. So I'd, I'd ask for authorization to continue to onboard those for our projected hiring date of April twentieth.
Brian, we are going to have another meeting next Friday. And we can probably address a lot more of these different areas that people are needing, different people. And I think that's more appropriate than making motions today on different people's areas. That's my opinion until next Friday. Because I, we do have a department head on Monday. So I'm not saying no.
Sure.
I'm just saying I don't think it's, today is the time to decide or not decide on different.
I, I just know, we're, sorry, if I may.
Otherwise, Joe or other people might come up and say they've had three people on the line and, and then Kevin's got four on the line. And I don't think this is a place to, to do it right now. I think on Monday, when we have a department head, we're going to have you list some of those things and, and go where we need to go, is a good way to put it. So I'm not objecting to what you're saying, sir. Okay.
And I, I understand that. And currently, we, we have eight openings. And five of them, we're not, we're planning on pushing them off until a later date.
Yes, sir.
So, but these, these are people who are already in the process of giving their two weeks' notice at their current employers coming on. And then the other position that we have that we've made an offer to that's going to start, that's scheduled to start on the twentieth, is a counselor at the Juvenile Services Center. And that's a requirement through the Bureau of Prisons with our contract that we have with them to provide counseling services. We've been utilizing other personnel, but we had somebody that was online to come on to provide that is, and that is a required service that we're, that we have to provide for the Bureau of Prisons contract at the Juvenile Services Center.
Madam Chair.
Thank you, sir.
Brian, on Monday, when the department heads get together, what we're going to be doing is getting basically an inventory, Okay. so to speak, of what they're going to be needing. And then, then on Tuesday, correct, or Friday?
Friday.
Friday. At our next special meeting, we'll discuss whether or not we can move forward with that. But it, obviously, if it's going to be federally mandated in order to keep that operation open, that's going to lean heavy on our consideration, I'm sure.
We, we, as you know, we collect a, a great deal of revenue through that contract, through the Bureau of Prisons.
Yes, sir.
Madam Chair.
I agree, Mark. And Deb, I, I think we're going to have some of this coming forward. And that's why we're not, you know, we kind of delayed this out, but Monday during the department heads, I mean, you're going to give us what you need to, to maintain, to keep things running. And we're going to have to make some tough decisions, but I mean, you're going to have to give us the information we need to make a good decision. I don't want to be shooting stuff off the fly today, but I think.
Totally, I understand that.
We're, we're not ignoring you.
I just wasn't sure when they pass that, what that was going to look like and when the next time we might be able to get consideration. But with that process in mind, we'll bring that to the department head meeting on Monday and appreciate it.
And I think a lot, when we discuss what we're doing at the department head, that we had a retreat today, I think that'll kind of clear some of this up, so everybody's on the same page. So we're not saying no or yes. We're, we're saying this is going to be our parameters. And then everybody, at this point, can see what our parameters are for the, for the rest of the year, is the bottom line.
The opportunity to vote would be on Friday next week, just for our timeline purposes?
Yes, sir.
Right.
And then Monday, you'll have a little bit more definition of what we're thinking.
Perfect.
Thank you, sir.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Anything else today? No?
Move to adjourn.
Moved by DeSanto, second by Ross Connect to adjourn. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.